And it's now 2:09. We can all stand for the head of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the book of liberty and justice for all. To the flag of the United States of America, to the symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
Roll call please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Senator?
Here.
Senator?
Here.
President.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, everybody, for coming today, guys, to the special meeting. We're hoping to get more people, maybe more people will continue to come in as we continue on with our meeting. Board members, we have the agenda before us.
Madam President, please take the motion to approve. Mr. Triplehorn can now come out because he is reviewing contractors for Lincoln at this point, so if we can bring number three to the next meeting. Number five, eight three. And Dr. White lost her father from the plot here, so we can bring her six to the same. Same also. Five eight six. Five eight six.
What's on the board? Motion made by Mr. Mitchell. Roll call.
Mr. Manini?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Ethan?
Yes.
Mrs. Manoito?
Yes.
Any public comments? Number three approval of minutes?
The discussion on the trip. We need to sort of minor support him, I can see.
Can I make a suggestion to you guys, okay? Since we're not really right up, can you guys talk like you're addressing the room instead of like you're talking to sitting next to you?
Okay.
That way I can see you guys. I think you guys are pretty good with these mics, but if you're talking like you're sitting next to you instead of like you're addressing the room, bear the thing you guys.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell is saying there's no discussion on the Miami River trip that was taken. The football trip is not in the minutes. And I know the board did have a lengthy discussion on that. I don't know where that could be. But that was at the time when Evelyn was the one that voted in for the meeting.
Mr. Manini?
Listen.
Oh, Lynn.
Just a small item under the study circle. Reports number seven or eight are listed as items since they were on the agenda, but they were not taken up, so those things should just be deleted. Minor thing.
Madam President?
Yes?
With that not being recorded, I'd love it to be taped. We worked on and then we get information concerning the trips off the tape. And with doing that, we can approve the minutes and I do so move.
Do you want to table it? Are you saying enable it to next meeting after added? I mean, yeah, table it and then approve.
No, we can put it as an addendum in the minutes to the minutes. That's all we have to do is have someone approve what's on the tape, make record off the tape, that I can move and approve all these events as they are right now.
Joan, there was also a couple of directives, some directives made to the superintendent that's also not put into the minutes.
They were not right among the agenda?
Madam President?
Yes?
Is there a motion on the floor for Mr. Manini?
Um, no.
Pardon me?
Did you make?
Yes, I hear.
I'm sorry, not again. Sorry.
I think we need to vote on that as soon as we can. My preference given there seem to be several questions. It would be simply to be safe to table this for the next meeting so those additions can be made and so on. We could approve it as Manini said with the understanding of those things being done, but seems to be more comfortable seeing what gets put in for sure.
Motion on the floor to approve Mr. Manini's motion. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Ethan?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mrs. Manoito?
No.
Madam President?
Yes?
I move that we table approval of the minutes until the next meeting. And those items, please, added that are necessary.
Motion failed.
Motion made by Mr. Hittman to table the meeting minutes of November 20th. Roll call, please.
That's the next meeting automatically. It failed.
Okay, no, it's wrong.
All right, proceed.
So it's going to come back. Mr. Hittman, are you here, Jill?
I did.
Okay. Number four, approval of consent agenda items. Six C, six D, six E, eight H, oh, sorry, eight B, eight C, eight M, and eight G.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Manini?
I have a question concerning, uh, make sure I get it right on here. Yes, the continued item of eight G under the exhibit, statement of work on page nine. And someone tell me where this conference is going to be held at? Jill, I misunderstood, I think, which side of your? It's on eight G. It's under consent agenda items, and I'm questioning, just want to know where that conference is going to be held at. And it's on page nine under that agenda item eight G. Tells all about how much they're going to reimburse us for these. It's one person to go to, but does not say. I cannot find any place in here where it's going to be held at. And it's two hundred and? Yeah. Two hundred and ninety-five miles away.
That would be around the trip. So I am going to guess it could be Albuquerque.
The head to toe conference is a health conference that they have for school health. It's usually Albuquerque.
Thank you.
Two hundred and ninety-five miles. Two hundred and ninety-five miles, Mr. Manini, is round trip.
Correct. That's what I was, wanted to make sure before I go on with that. That's the only questions I have on considered agenda items, Madam President.
My question's on eight C. What does the A and T say for?
C, parents' teachers?
Thank you. Any other questions, pardon?
Madam President, I move that the consent agenda items be approved.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Ethan?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mrs. Manoito?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to five, study circle, under A reports. Number one, we have board reports.
Madam President, I attended the UNM graduation on Saturday and held at Miami River High School. And that is only I believe I have been to during this time.
Thank you.
Hold you simply, yeah. Yes, also, we went to, thank you, Mrs. Jeff, to the conference held at Embassy Suites for the New Mexico School Board Association Conference. I don't recall what I attended right now, my mind's blank, sorry. But I did go there.
Mrs. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam President. I too also attended in Mexico School Board Association. I left my packets, so I could go down and talk about the sessions that I attended. But just want everybody to know that we nominated our board president to be the, um, the school, uh, their, um, vice secretary. So came very close in the honor to, to support her. So thank you, Madam President.
True you.
And Miss Tru, Tru, is about that long, right?
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Hittman?
I likewise attended the state annual conference and among the various sessions, it's a good conference. Two that I attended that I'll mention. One was on drug use overdose phenomenon that we're seeing nationally, but in Mexico, I think they said, right, it's about pork in overdose incidents. And anyway, it was very informative. One of those things you just have to kind of be alert to and see as things affect schools, whether there's things to do. But it was good background information. Another one was on school climate by Dr. Prather. Hugh Prather does training for the New Mexico School Board Association, and that was the session that inspired the item on the agenda about school climate that we'll get to later. I also attended two game again, that season started out at the chapter house thanks to the invitation from our former president, the board, Ayus Nez. Over a hundred people and some of the strong singing I've heard for quite a while. So I'll just mention that just because that's another world sometimes than we see through the school walls. And then I also attended the UNM graduation, actually because the middle college high school was to be part of that. And I want to mention that the Miami River High School band played for the commencement, for the UNM commencement, played songs before, then the processional, and then the recessional. They did a good job, I commend them for not just being involved, but doing a good job musically with the state of development and some of the kids haven't played that long. And also just observing their focused behavior when they were sitting there. It could have been a distraction, and they were actually contributing by their good behavior. So that's it.
As I also attended the conference in Albuquerque that was put on by the New Mexico School Board Association. Went to some sessions that were very helpful to me. I also attended our legislative meeting with Senator Pinto and Senator Minos to go over our priorities for the district. I attended the Tohachi Elementary Christmas Program just past Wednesday as well. And yesterday, I attended the Kibikanning chapter meeting as well as the Christmas gathering that was held after.
Thank you, board members. Like my colleagues, I attended the Embassy Suites New Mexico School Board Association, the legislative session that we had with our legislators at the Student Support Center. I also attended the Thirooth chapter meeting and also the celebration they had a week later for the Christmas dinner with, for our community. I was invited to the, one of our elementary school staff dinner, Christmas dinner that was held in Grants. The Cheetah Winter Program. And also we had the Community Buildings of Hope that was in our area. So those were the events that I attended. Yes?
We also, you and I also attended due credit. Again, Crown Point at the, uh, Department of Technical University and also traveled to San Antonio to attend the public comments regarding the due credit.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to two, notices and communication. December seventeenth, UNM graduation. December nineteenth through the thirtieth is our winter break. January third is the, our next Board of Education meeting on a Tuesday. January tenth is spelling meeting, nine AM to, oh, yeah, at Gallup High School. January seventeenth is our another Board of Education meeting. And then we'll move on to the, oh, never mind. To four, Native American month report.
Some of the things that have been happening in the district for the Native American month. We have a number of pageants and craft fairs. Many different things going on. If you've noticed on our webpage, they did do a very good job of, putting out information on the events that distinguish between my parent meetings and here. If there's parent stuff, we'll get to it. I'm looking at it backwards. Uh, we've been Tohachi. Tohachi has Navajo Works and Craft Day. This is at the elementary school. Also, Moccasin Jewelry Day, Clan Day. We have Miss Nana Nation, Ronda Joe coming to speak on traditional attire. A Western Dress Day home with the Tohachi Elementary Princess Pageant. And then we follow by another traditional dress day. Miami River High School, again, did something similar. The Moccasin Day, Turquoise Day, Hairbund Headband Day. They had Miss Miami River Pageant. And then a traditional dress up and formal assembly to loan everybody. Crown Point, observed Rock and Moccasin Day. Show of your turquoise day, bless you. Represent your clan day. Students create bracelets to represent their clans using recycled material. Traditional dress day. Education Matters showcased some items for the celebration of the month. Showcasing the City of Gallup library activities. Had the Navajo Language and Culture Coaches on on November sixteenth to do the education matters. Then the J O E Parental Involvement Director on November thirtieth. So we focused our education matters for that time period also. Cheetahs, we all spoke about, had a theme, came through our traditional culture. They had some guest speakers throughout the day talking about traditional dress and different things. Guest speaker Delia, Delia Kinsel, home of Miss UNM, spoke on Moccasin Day. On the traditional hairbund and headband day, they had Mr. Richard speaking about it. Jewelry Day, they had a guest speaker, Paul Houston. And then traditional dress up day, best dress contest for the students and the staff. Tried getting both involved. And they also had Rhonda Joe there as a special guest. They also had the home pageant. Crown Point, again, they did similar to the others. Crown Point High School, the Lake Club sponsored a week full of activities, including Moccasin Day, Turquoise Day, World Heritage Day, and the Traditional Thursday. And then a Wear Your Clan Day on the Friday with their guest speaker, Julie Henderson. They had a theme, food throughout the week also. Navajo tea being served on Monday, blue corn mush on Tuesday, and then they just put et cetera. As everybody's students come up and do their activities. These are just samples, I'm not going to go through the whole, whole district, but pretty much every school had something going on. School had a big class competition. Whether you're doing vocabulary, words, having the classes compete in a vocabulary, Native American vocabulary contest. They had a Native American trivia contest. Game and round, sort of like a power type thing. Having popcorn balls and tracker jacks. Four legged moccasin race. Different things, just as a big class activities at the end of the day. Maybe they had a kind of competition to all the classes. Pretty much all the schools did like that. I mean, if you want me to continue going, I can. I think the best thing is to really look at the webpage. Those items are still up with all the buttons. There's samples of materials, literature, pictures, educational sample lessons.
Video.
Video. You know, they gave the teachers a good, good idea of what to do. It was kind of, kind of great to see that. Some schools did timelines of the history of traditional people in the area. I've got the Crown Point Elementary. I can continue going. I'm hoping that's a good enough sample for what you're asking for now.
Madam President?
Yes?
Thank you for the report. I want to just comment that I asked for that report and the agenda because I want to know what was happening. Because you can't get around everywhere. And I think, Mr. Chippedy, you're correct that the websites have a lot of samples of that. If you go to individual school websites and giving the schedules and photos and so on, so it's there. But I think part of the motive too to me is just to say, to signal as a board that this is important. And I asked for the report, both for information and some people thought, well, somebody cares about it in terms of paying attention to what's going on to reinforce and support those activities. I'm glad to hear mention of some class activities along with the kind of common things of dress days and so on. I think we, in line with our own mission statement and nature of our district, we can, we can appreciate and signal our appreciation for the various heritages we have. We should do that. And hopefully, schools will continue to steal ideas from each other. Meaning, you know, pick up on one school doing something unique. There were a lot of speakers. I was impressed with some of the schools in terms of the number of speakers they brought in within even one week, did all those arrangements. So thank you for the report.
Moving on to integrating Navajo media across the curriculum board. I believe last time I was expressed to say you wanted to see some kind of samples, if I remember right. Um, so, you know, really have to thank the zone directors. They reached out to their schools, um, visited classrooms with principals, different things. Came back, went with a number of things. And, and again, I can go on to the bottom of the day with the stack of papers I had. Really like just to hit some of the key things that, that I thought was, um, very special. Where you can see they're making it an area of focus. We sat here at the beginning of the meeting over in this room. As soon as I put the paper clip back on, it's good. I, I'll start off with Gallup Middle School. Gallup Middle School actually sat down with the staff and picked together a focus of, focus of how they can integrate thematic type units and such throughout the, throughout every content area. Pull in vocabulary. History, literature, et cetera. Okay, that one. So they did cultural responsive practices at Gallup High School. So they actually have a document that they put out to all the staff. Again, it was staff. And, and they went through, and it was nice because they did like a two column note taking thing. On the left where they put quotes from teachers to show how teachers are implementing different things. Like this one here, Gretchen Fodderstrom, she put one of the, is one of the teachers who specializes in working with gifted students. She wrote, "We've worked with issues in utopia and dystopia societies among the world. Global human migrations through the refugee crisis to poverty and entrepreneurship." And, and then they, they kind of listed some things on the side of lessons that they put in. "Navajo Wears Nikes: Reservation Line" by Jim Ristow. "Sees Behind the Trees" by Michael Doris. And then they have other things that were going on that are not, that are integrating other cultures. Like "I Have a Dream" by Martin Luther King in San Diego. "The Woman Who Lived by the Wolves," traditional story. "Book of the Dead" in the Egyptian story, Torah Jewish, Quran Islamic. "The Absolute Two Diary of a Third Time Anymore" by Shirley Lexie. "Selecting Problems" by Lucy, oh, thank you, Apa Homso, and Shirley Lexie. And then they, they kind of branched off into, at the same time, current events and themes. Um, example were some articles. They're trying to change it from just the focus on basic literature to also technical reading. That's a big focus of our curriculum because of the part of exam and a lot of the kids are being tested on. So a lot of the stuff they're pulling in is, is newspaper articles. Within these newspaper articles, they're trying to orient them towards events that are affecting our, our area. So they pulled in like coal powered, coal power plant divides Navajo tribe. Some have jobs, some are sick. An article in the Los Angeles Times. "The Long Coast Colorado Mines Let Go of Toxic Todd Wave." "Navajo Nation Plans on Junk Food to Encourage Healthier Eating Habits." And then they, they put in again, some of the traditional stories. "The Boy Who Made Dragonfly," Coed Talkers by Joseph Rosack. "Blood and Thunder" by Hampton Sides. And, and they, they did it through just a number of different lessons, through different, um, again, not just sticking with the gifted, um, but they went into social political, sixth grade social studies. Garrett Stoles explains to students compare and contrast their society with various cultures that they run about. For example, they recently used the caste system to highlight the strengths and weaknesses of our own society. So, different things. And this, this year we're gonna copy up here and get all these. Again, they brought in other things some of the teachers are working on. Thought this one was great. It was an English class career. Trying to use several of the, um, kind of penetrate and come into the culture. And Priscilla would ask you to help me. You know, they talked about "You Are My Other Me." So, so they're trying to do it in multiple languages, you know? "If I do harm to you." They, they did it in several, several forms. "I do harm to myself." "I love and respect you." Bring it back in the Navajo. So they're teaching the Navajo phrase along with the English phrase. Kind of, kind of integrating the, the language into their character counts or their, um, positive behavior supports. So this, this was very good. At the middle school level, as an example, I pulled out at the middle school level. Each of the teachers have the taboos and teachings for different times of the year. Animals, foods, those type of things. And then of course the directions and they have lessons built around all the lessons. Uh, another powerful one was Blue Elementary. Blue Elementary also pulled together thematic units to integrate into the Native Rachel Wonders curriculum.
And mostly Common Core, but using the Wonders.
Yeah, Common Core, using the Wonders curriculum. So they brought in different lessons, different activities on the directions or clan system and such to be able to build into that kind of school. So those were pretty powerful. Um, I've got examples of high school lessons, um, which I thought were, were pretty, pretty well thought out. They brought in different things. Shows of American literature at Gallup High School. American literature's eleventh grade. Did a unit on transcend, transcendalism, transcendalism and Navajo philosophy of being. Uh, again, the key, the key is the vocabulary from Forsaken Directions to the word I could pronounce to beauty, nature, self reliance, minimalistic assimilation, different things. And then some of the resources. Navajo Philosophy and its Appreciation of Education by Joda Bogorvachin. Hojo, his name, concept of balance of beauty. Navajo Forsaken Mountains. Sapporo War Hypnosis on a League Westic Relativity. Navajo Four Criminal Directions again. Nature by Ralph Waldo Emerson. Self Reliance by Ralph Waldo Emerson. Walden, the poem by Jerome, Jerome. When I Heard, When I Heard, The Merit Astronomer by Walt Whitman. So they brought in things. And then they brought in the noiseless patient spider, solitude space, the beauty of trees, uh, different things. And then wrote it down on the differentiation, the visual lessons, the small group. I do, you do, we do type thing, the essay that they're, and the readings that they had. So, uh, very, very powerful the way they're encompassing. But I brought together elementary, middle school, high school examples. And as I said, I could go on for days. I really thank the schools for doing it. I'm actually going to work with Terry to, to start an online library type thing of these lessons. So other schools can start, you know? Julie put a lot of work in this eleventh grade of American history, I mean, American literature. I'll teach American literature at every high school in the district. So it'd be good for her to be able to share that work with other teachers and then vice versa. What's saving that great deal, she could probably pick up some cultural historical stuff from here to, to take it back to Gallup High. A big, big thing of different lessons, lesson plans, thematic units, activities, you name it.
Do you happen to have any examples from science or music?
I, I did have some for music, I noticed. Science, there were some for the, the school things. A lot, neat one was, was health, around health. Where there was, I think it was about forty, thirty lessons, thirty lessons for healthy children. And brought in, brought in different things that, that can be done in line with Common Core lessons to, to everything. Where, where they could get into charting of weights, foods ate, getting into actual cooking recipes and stuff like that and formulas. Uh, this is something that every school had to be implemented with the younger grades. Um, in art, there were some sand paintings, symbols and symmetry lessons. I'll, I'll have them on that sand paintings coating, coating the background, their lines and shapes. A critique of sand paintings, written symbols. This is in charts. There's even some Spanish examples, using Spanish models.
So, all of those, since they're electronic and grading, I mean, they're still not handwritten, of course. Those could, those can be posted in a sense, like you say, for access by everybody else in the district. I mean, all of the teachers looking for things in their subject area, grade level, et cetera.
Yes, and then that's my goal to do. And then the history, education of a literary unit, which would be science and literature. Discover civilizations' history. Had a lot of history. Mexico culture and American world and government. But this one was very powerful. If you would have noticed at the last school board meeting, we had a number of high school students who were there. Um, that was because of a lesson at Gallup High School, Ms. Paul Reedy. Which gave her, her children a choice. They could go to a city council meeting, candidate candidate commissioners meeting, school board meeting, or a local chapter house meeting. And then what the assignment was, you had to have the agenda, members present, members present on their notes and then a two to three page summary of the events. So she was pulling in all cultures there. Let's see, they'll find the signs for Indian culture, Apache, fact, social studies, social studies.
Madam President, may I suggest or request that, um, before those get put online or in the meantime, that may take a while, those copies could be made available in the superintendent's office. I'd like to be able to take a look at some of those, all of those. They're simply accessible there. And then whoever's going to do the mechanics of posting them, I don't know. Cause they're already online, some sort of email attachments or something, I don't know. But I would, I would like to look at that.
The biggest thing is really what, what kind of platform, I think, doing it by content area would probably be the best. Grade and topic. That's an ongoing, we're just starting to get them in. And I'm hoping once we start posting them, grab the interest of teachers to want to post to it. So actually, if we could do it as an interactive type thing, we take and post.
As part of our, part of my interest or my question in terms of what, how far along we are in what we're doing is if I would go to a random science teacher, random, maybe, a science teacher, whatever grade level, whatever school and say, "What are you doing? Have you been queued to do something in terms of this integration?" You know, are they all going to say, "Yep, I'm aware of it. I've got an idea, I had an idea from my fellow teacher over here." You know, how far along are we on it? And, uh, our teachers finding ways to do it. It's new to them. They're not familiar with ideas Navajo as already. And, uh, the same that in all the subject areas, I just figured we picked random teachers. You know, how, how two of them are they helping everybody finding ways to do it? And you, you obviously got a stack that's a good sign.
One would be very problematic is the school, the real school why.
Well, you might have answered the question that I wanted to ask on this in, which is, um, I know that in the past we've gotten a lot of resistance about this integrating, um, Navajo and Native American curriculum into, um, the core classes. So has, has that improved? Has that, is it still a struggle? Is it, um, is it a lot better now that, um, I don't know.
You know, we've been implementing it for three years on a slow basis. We've found over time, just by being in this district for twenty-five years, if you mandate, demand to seek compliance, you get it on paper and that's about it. We've been integrating for, for three years at a pace of, to make them feel comfortable through professional development, through the, the trainings that they've done. They give, well, the, the areas of cultural competence, that's what I'm looking at. And now that we've been bringing those, having the suggestions, I'm doing the new teacher mentoring around these type of things. It's making, it's helping people with things that we've got, well, further wanting to reach out and try doing. So, um, it, it's, has small pockets of resistance where people first started and large pockets due to apprehension and uncomfortableness. And then down to small pockets that I think can be overcome really by some issues and, and like the website and everything, things like that. I know other districts have a bigger, um, bigger resistance, especially when you have board managers who speak out against it at national conferences. And then that really reflects along with the classroom level. I think our, our, to is of acceptance from top down is building from the bottom up.
Madam President?
Yes.
Superintendent, the pool is all involved unless we can reset three years on it. And we just get into all participants are involved. And putting this, and putting this together.
Um, what we've been doing, and you call it the zone directors. Um, we've used our Navajo language and coaching coaches. And we brought in, in some individuals also. Um, some of the stuff that we're doing is, the district never had a formal curriculum guide. Um, and we've been putting together a curriculum guide. We've done K eight so far, English and math. And then within this curriculum guide, we're, we're trying to embed ELD strategies and VLL strategies for, for the, the dual language learners. And now we are starting to develop the, um, don't need competent standards within it. And examples of, we already have examples of quality lessons based on the Common Core. Now we're wanting to, we're solely putting in these type of lessons that are lessons that are aligned with the Common Core, but also have a language and cultural background. So it's been a, it's been a large group working on it. We have a ways to go. We're actually working with the company right now to start writing the nine and twelve. And we'll be helping write the nine through twelve, English and math portion of curriculum. But we're still developing, finishing the K eight on the cultural resources and those stuff.
And, um, Madam President, Superintendent, is it costing the district anything for all these people to come together to develop this?
Um, well, we contracted with the company to, to develop the, the curriculum guide. We aligned it to Common Core and to our, our pacing guide. The other ones we, as we bring in people, we do pay the stipends. If we're maybe after hours or different things, we, we pay stipends and such to order.
And, um, Madam President and Superintendent, who are we contracting this out to?
Um, we can contract with the K through eight curriculum piece to Lou Centini. He's National Conference of Contracts on Doing Curriculum and Such. And then, again, the teachers I'm bringing in are the teachers that are showing their vast scores to be highly effective or exemplary, like the last teachers that we just brought in to recognize. Because they're already proving that their lessons are reaching every student. And they're showing the scores to be able to do that. I'm not just doing a cart blank, asking any teacher who wants to come in. The district has done in the past. We're actually selecting those that are showing the results in the classroom.
And Madam President and Superintendent, so what are you doing with the other teachers that are not implementing to develop this curriculum?
What are we doing with the teachers?
The other teachers, we can understand that we need new teachers.
We bring most teachers in to develop, and then we, each school has done a professional development to roll out the curriculum. So part of our contract with Lou Centini's group was to kind of administrate the principles and how to work with their teachers to roll it out. And then the principles at the beginning of the year, we had that rollout of K through eight. And then we will be having more days of rollout as we finalize the cultural applications and such to grow. We roll it out to all teachers so they can feel comfortable accessing and using the curriculum.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
Madam President?
Yes.
We do not have a position in the district called Curriculum Director, Curriculum Coordinator, right? So, question one is, would it strengthen all this if we had such a position? Question two, Madam President, is, who is primarily responsible for overseeing this and making sure that this kind of training and development happens? Comment, in addition, it seems to me, you know, there was a I could say, who was Dr. Andre some months ago, now wrote a letter to the editor. To the effect, his thinking, perceiving that when we're trying to add, enrich, do more of the Navajo related debated things, that somehow that is countering or taking away from the historic Western academic thing, which I think nothing could be further from the truth in my mind. They should contribute to each other. Well, my point is, when we look back over the past half a century, put it that way, different schools' efforts individually as districts, Winderock, Patinley, Shiprock, believe it or not, years ago, developing Native American and Navajo-related materials. And the publishing houses from the Rio Grande Press and so on. There's a lot of stuff that's been, that has happened over many years, but it's been piecemeal. There's no single repository that I know of, where all of those materials have been collected and are available, whether it be U M, Neff College, School District. What I, what I am unable to do, I'm sure, myself, is to really generate the excitement that I think is potentially there if we really got into this. And teachers saw the potential of it, not as a board policy requirement, like you say, it tends to, sometimes when things come from the top down, I resist that too. But there is so much out there, in addition to so much yet to, that can be done. But somewhere, I guess I'm hoping that teachers start to see this as enriching their teaching. And that they get assistance, but we don't have anybody that I know that's really going out there also growing, you know, stuff that's already been done. As, you know, resources and sources. I don't know if you see a way to strengthen that, whether as we look forward even in the next budget year, whether putting a specific curriculum position, you know, would help that, or other things, to the themes that's farmed out right now. Perhaps to, plus you two are dependent with a number of other kinds of things to focus on at the same time. So I'd just like your thoughts on.
We get back to the first question, is the curriculum, curriculum position, we do not, we leverage those type of positions into the zone directors. So we do it as a team approach. So they're actually all working with the Centini group, Empower, and different other groups to bring in the training, to bring in the rollout, those type of things. Dr. White has seen the need for not only having culture coaches to work with the culture teachers, but to work with the general teachers, the core teachers. So she's designated one of the Navajo related culture teachers to actually work a lot of time from that. We might be able to bring that person in to help create a library and that type of thing, as you're talking about. So those are the things that we're doing. And I agree with you. There is no formal place anywhere. I can see a lot of our schools purchasing from San Juan School District, different other presses. You know, there's about four or five groups that they seem to be purchasing through. And with those purchases, again, it's, the only people who've been putting things together to put out are the ones that want to make money off of it. So there is no nonprofit or school entity that has a good library to really develop and put out. So that's something we can look at. Again, I think that would be a good partnership with the Step Press, us asking WDO with the Navajo Asian Library and cultural entities to actually put together. I think that they're a step ahead in being able to do that. And then it's a, it's not people coming to Gallup Hemi for these type of things, but it's actually coming to a part of the main education. I think more received and more stable. Staying with the school district, because I think I've seen where certain school districts have really targeted real hard for five to six years. And then it starts to disappear. They start their own press material, their own pressing stuff. And then now you're lucky if you can find some of those still in print. But if you went through something like the Navajo Asian Library, conjunction with WDO, it'd be impermanent. Better resource than a school district can. I hope, you had a lot of questions in there. I hope I hit most of them. If that, besides with that, Mr. Henry, I believe it's your statement, oral language skills standardized test. My ask, I ask at the beginning to put that off, because Dr. White's right. It's not there.
I want to share the planned statements report here, and when we think of the history of Navajo education and Indian education, somewhat true to a degree for certain immigrant families in earlier years too. But when the treaty of 1868 was made, written in Washington, agreed to under pressure at Fort Sumter, it provided, made provision for providing, quote, "the elementary branches of an English education." And kids under that treaty, and in other ways, that Carlisle and so on, they learn English. They learn English. Their growth in English was probably phenomenal. But they did it under rules that said, "You learn English, you do not use your home language." Kids were, as we know, I'm not telling anybody here anything new, kids were punished if they spoke Indian language. My point is, they learned English at the expense of their own home language. Now we are, we have this new phenomenon in the long run of history where people call literacy. It's a great invention. Literacy is a great invention. And math ain't so bad either. I like math. But we have, in the process of state testing, a focus on two areas, but it's not just subject areas. What I want to just put forth for a little background thinking awareness somewhere that lodges in the long run is that this is also involved in a shift then from being an oral society to a literate society. And there are books written about that, and the theory at least, the view is that it's not just adding to the skill of literacy. It affects somewhat how people think about things, how they reason, how they do things. When you shift from a totally oral society, where everything, including how things are remembering, has to be done orally through repetition and reinforcement and so on, and shift to literacy. Anyway, I'll, I just, I will read this one pager called Orality and Literacy. And I'll start ahead. I guess I only have two copies. Somebody, okay, you get the other copy. I'll email you all copies. "We know that state standardized testing measures, measures only, state testing measures only a very few areas of educational learning and life skills, namely, English language literacy and certain types of math. We also realize that many other areas important in school life, including the arts, various applied technical skills, Navajo and other home languages, beliefs, and interpersonal social skills are not tested in state testing. I believe that literacy is perhaps the most significant invention in human history. I believe it is very, very important. So I think we should measure students' literacy skills in English and other languages. But there is another effect of literacy, one that is reinforced by state testing, that is not often identified or discussed. This is the shift from orality to literacy in people's lives and thinking. The term orality is used in ethnolinguistics and psycholinguistics and anthropology to describe the nature of language use in totally oral societies who are not literate or before they become literate. This is significant due to the different ways in which people sometimes think in oral versus literate cultures. And the oral language and related skills, the orality that characterize language usage in oral societies. These includes form, these include forms of social discourse, argumentation, oratorical skills, and rhetoric. And also the importance of an attention to aural, A-U-R-A-L, aural memory, listening and hearing memory. Since ideas and experiences must be recorded in memory rather than in writing. But orality skills remain necessary and important in today's literate society. Think, for example, of the importance of speaking well during a job interview, or when campaigning for an elective office, or making a proposal to a city council, a tribal council, or for an attorney presenting arguments in court, or a minister preaching, and so on. All kinds of areas where oral language is primary, and we have to be skilled at it to be effective. But though teachers do still teach some kinds of speech and speaking, state testing does not measure or reinforce the development of students' oral speaking skills or aural memory skills. I mention this because we are surrounded by and live within several cultural communities, I mean, in our school district, where oral tradition and communication, including listening, storytelling, and oratory, continue to be essential to the practice and perpetuation of the culture. Even while schools are bringing about the shift from orality to literacy. Recognize this, recognizing this is part of keeping in mind the big picture of the purpose and the effect of our educational practices, including state testing. So I'm just saying, you know, we get, I don't want us to be just technicians. I don't want teachers to be just technicians where we, we do the system that somebody hands us. We need to see the overall impact and the nature of Western education, formal education, school education, on communities and on cultures. And to add literacy to me is great. But it is more than just adding literacy. It really impacts also the continuation and some of the uses of oral communication in the society. And it is so important, and I just want to be conscious of the fact that state testing doesn't pay any mind to oral language and listening skills. And I don't have any proposals of what to do about that. I just think that's the nature of the history of where we're at. And for what it's worth, I wanted to express that, to think about it, get it on my chest. And I will send your copy to this, I thought I had more to this.
Madam President? Yes, I think that's a really good concept, Mr. Henry, because I know that when some bills had come down during the time I was there in Santa Fe, and I know that I had a a discussion with some of the PEP staff to have them understand that the Native Americans are very unique here in this state, and that we're unlike other states. And to kind of give them a history of the Native Americans and how we our language and what you just talked about, about how the children, the Native American students, went out there and had to learn the first language, English. And so hoping that maybe they would have an understanding of how unique we are, it happened. And so, you know, I was kind of disappointed. I was hoping that by doing the outreach and to reach out to PEP and to have them understand, you know, our state, because there are more mysteries and models from out of state. And that's a problem that we seem to always have, is that we get these models from out of state that aren't even familiar with how we are so far different, with 22 tribes in this state versus other states. And so I just wanted to allude to that as well, and I really thank you, Mr. Henry, for bringing this up. I would like to kind of comment on that.
I just want to, some of that, there are all kinds of examples. I just wanted to keep this, I don't want to get carried away on it because I can do that. But if anybody wants to have a discussion with more concrete examples of what this sort of theoretical state is, I'd be happy to engage in that. I'm sorry, boys.
I think I just, I just wanted to say, you know, a lot of us have sacrificed our language, our oral language, to learn English. And, you know, I mean, that's, there's good in that, because we, we tell our kids, "Go get educated, go climb the ladder of success." But the cost of that sometimes, and even in my case, is, and I, you know, I have to say this to a board member, is look at the language I'm speaking. But it's hard, because I go back to English, then to Navajo, because there's some words in Navajo that I can't say. And so I go back and forth. I'm fortunate enough that I still can and able to speak some of it. I understand a lot. I mean, I can, I'm very, I can understand it when it's spoken to me. That's where I feel the difficulty. And we should be able to speak freely in Navajo or any language. But I feel, I don't want to offend anybody. I don't want to get it used against me, saying that I'm using my language to retaliate or to say stuff. It's a beautiful language. There's hardly any negative terms in Navajo that you can use against somebody. And I don't, and, but I, I love speaking it when I get a chance. But when I go back, like I'm going to go see my Nali next week, and I'm going to be like, "Oh, how do I say that?" "Er, don't help me, or Mom, help me." How do I say this to my Nali? But I'm glad that we're implementing this, because I don't want others to feel the way I feel at times. By youngsters, I'm um, I'm embarrassed sometimes that I can't speak my native tongue. But I'm, I'm changing that with my grandbabies where, um, [Spanish] I'm talking to them in Navajo. So, and I've been trying to buy some books that we can read and to them. But thank you, Mr. Haneman, for providing us with that information.
Madam President, you know, I think it's very important that we, um, do bring our language into our schools. You know, you go to the charter house or you go to the Navajo nation, a lot of the jobs, you know, you, it says, must be bilingual in order to go on work at that job. You know, there's a lot of jobs at the charter house and at the Navajo nation level that I have recently. But when it comes to saying, you know, must be bilingual, you know, that causes me out. And I'm not qualified, even though I would, um, be perfect at the, um, the job that they're asking a person to do. You know, just the fact that they're asking for someone to be bilingual. You know, I think that, you know, it's a good thing that we are putting this back into the curriculum. And, you know, I think it would help our students in further than employment. Thank you.
I would like to thank Mr. Haneman for starting off the way you did because it's, this is not a native culture issue. This is, this is a surrounding culture issue. I, I can, and I think it's important that if we stress it that way, people can relate to it and have some empathy, and it will help us put this across the curriculum. If you look at me, I'm fourth generation. First generation in the Gallup area spoke only Italian. Second generation was not allowed to speak Italian. You'll become culturized because that's the way you're going to survive in America. That's the way you're going to be able to get a job. That's the way you're going to be able to do so. Now, they have a receptive language because they still heard mom and dad talking about it, but they weren't allowed to verbalize it, so they only had receptive. Um, but when you get fourth generation down the road where you're no longer exposed to that first generation who spoke it on a daily basis, um, you learn just the cuss words. Um, you know, luckily through organizations and stuff, you, you can start learning some of your culture and, and different backgrounds. Um, I'm Italian, on my father's side, a hundred percent going that way up. But I know we're Slav for being brought up with friends who, who practiced their Slavic because they were, they were, they were actually born in Yugoslavia at the time and then moved to the area. So they were still practicing their traditions, and I learned through the Baugh family more Slavic customs than I did Italian customs. So, you know, I, I think with that empathy, if we tip it with that approach, um, it would help us as a tool to state, you know, eighty-six percent of our students are Native American and, you know, this is a good focus. So I do appreciate you starting over.
Is that finished on number seven? Parental involvement report.
I'm not going to go through every school again. Just going to get some highlights, instruct some department stuff. I'd like to really start with their special education office and really like some of the stuff they're doing. They've had the parent meetings, the IDP parent meetings where people all get introduced yourself, your coordinators, talked about what's new for sixteen and seventeen, put a parent schedule out, um, parent meetings throughout the year, from gifted to regular services, um, including the Project Search, our nineteen through twenty-one year old showcase, which is phenomenal. Extremely phenomenal. So, um, we, we have those different type of things. Two, um, some craft fairs, you know, I'm really approaching our recent history. Hey, Antonio. Um, I've had the recent holiday craft fairs going on at many of the schools. Jefferson, this last weekend, Roosevelt, different things. Some of the schools have been having kiddie camps. Gallup High School had a kiddie camp on December nineteenth. Not where they brought in any kid who wanted to come in to, to, um, learn some performances and stuff, and they perform for the parents. Gallup High School dance team did it to raise money for their trip to Florida, which you all approved. So kind of a fundraiser, but then at the same time, it was a, it was a way to showcase, you know, kids talent with their parents. Um, Del Norte had a family night, and people at the family night, they had a big chili cook-off. You know, have the parents could bring in different chilies and then cook off with prizes and such. Uh, let's see, what else do we have here? I mean, I'm just going, that's just going down the calendar. Gallup High School Drama presented Still Magnolias. Open to not just Gallup High parents, but to anybody who wanted to come to, to showcase the talents of Gallup High School students. Um, Gallup Middle School, an open house on August thirtieth. Big, big type of thing. Um, they, they did their fall fair with it. Getting around how to legally do cakewalks. You can't have a cakewalk, it's just a game of chance. So we learned everybody wins a prize and everything goes great there. In conjunction with Native American Week, of course, we had a lot of showcase that I've already talked about, showcasing student stuff. And, and while we're talking about it, that, that's something where we really showcased our education matters. But I think what's really showcasing there is some of the, um, media programs that our schools are starting to put together. Turbinella Elementary doing their elder news, Kennedy doing their Warrior News, Me and Mirar Times, you know, their Me and Mirar shows. And these are all student-led, student-based. Um, where they showcase their teachers, showcase kids' talents, showcase parents, and those different things. Um, we, it's not.
Um, Kennedy, they wanted to interview a board member.
Kennedy, yeah.
They wanted to interview a board member. So if any board members are interested in being interviewed by the youth, they would like to.
Mr. Mr. Haneman volunteered by being part of his contingencies though. Um, we have CYHP come in, we helped host, uh, the secretary, Will Dean Jackson, and the governor for a pull-together presentation. The governor didn't make it though. But they sent others. So I was at a Gallup High School where in this comparison, families, teachers, and student members to, you know, really look at making sure our students are safe and cared for. Kennedy is trying to do a full year's worth. October, they have Zumba Month and cycle spending type classes for, for parents and kids. November, they went into yoga month. December is self-defense training month. January is going into kickboxing. February, tai chi. March, country line dancing month. Help us. And then April, again, Miss Finner. So they're doing, there's more as a healthy initiative in partnership with IHS. Um, so they're doing that, trying to get their parents and kids together to, to work towards a healthy. Um, of course, we're having our, our sports meetings that we've asked all, all to do. Uh, Me and Mirar did a, a new thing this year on jumpstart days. The state allows us to have a jumpstart day, the first day of school, where incoming transition kids are the only ones coming to school. Well, this year, Me and Mirar opened it up not to just the kids, they opened it up to all the freshman families. And, and asked the families to, to accompany their students throughout the day. Let them see where they're going to be going to class, introducing the teachers, what activities and athletics are at the school. So it's not just the students being, going through the orientation, but it's the families. Um, we've had the district-wide music composition song contests. Uh, we're ongoing public hearings for our federal programs. Um, I mean, we, we can go on and on. The last one I really wanted to, to really speak on is, was approached by the state after our ESS meetings. Um, one thing they heard was a reflection of wanting to get more parents involved both ways instead of just one way. So they asked if we would like to be part of a pilot. And I brought this up to you all before, which was the APTT. That stands for Academic Parent Teacher Teams. And it replaces the Parent Teacher Conference to a team approach. I'll be giving you all the thing. But, but what it does at a glance, it starts off early fall, having a team meeting, where they actually meet with the family teams for seventy-five minutes. So it's not just a, come on in, let's do a two, three minute visit, this is how your kid's doing. It's actually a seventy-five minute type of team meeting where they bring in all the parents for that classroom. And they start discussing what the goals are for the class, what the focus is. Um, they'll have student data up on the walls, not like a digital course. Parents will have their students' individual data, but then they can all compare, how's my kid fitting in with, with the rest of the class type thing, where, where do you need to work? Um, then we get into October, November, where you start having thirty-minute individual sessions with the family. Start writing goals, individual goals for home and such. Uh, I had elementary principals, those that were interested, sit through a webinar. Hoping to get one to sign up for it. Um, I actually had eight elementary schools express interest in it. Told the state we've got eight. They said they would give us two, instead of one. So we're looking at a county school and a Uptown school to do it, and we're starting at Front Point Elementary and Jefferson Elementary. Um, to get the formal training, and if the other schools would like to go ahead and start this year, then they can get the training from the school staff at the school that needs training. We're starting it at the kindergarten level. So this year, it'll start kindergarten, second semester. We're entering into next year as those kids move from kindergarten to first period with their families. So this'll be an integration, a five-year integration to a school-wide approach in using this K three five. And I'm glad we finished with the all that stuff too. But it's an exciting program. It's funded by WestEd. And WestEd is the one that gets the cigarettes from the state of Mexico to help out. So they've given us two schools. And the Public Education Department, along with WestEd, will be in touch.
Did you mention [unintelligible]?
Jefferson?
Jefferson.
Other schools that showed interest, Navajo Elementary, [unintelligible] Elementary, Red Rock, Roosevelt, and Turbinella. So we will, like I said, if the other schools, the other schools would like to go ahead and start and do more of a training by the principal and teachers who go through the formal training. Um, I would love to do that, but I'll just wait until future spots open or see if we can afford a future boost. But this is a good way to actually get the, the parents involved on a daily basis in the classrooms. I think it's something we've been looking at. Instead of the old style, like I said, this is what your kid's doing, or somebody else waiting in the hallway next.
And I'm wondering, that model, I don't know specifically what in the model probably was. I'm wondering, what did it really cost money? I'm thinking maybe for.
Uh, the main, the main, the main cost is going to be the training. Again, it's, it's, um, six schools, eight schools throughout the state. So the, the principal and teachers will be going to Albuquerque to do a training at the same time. And then WestEd will actually be coming to the classroom to work with the teacher on a few of them. Instead of just, here's your training, go forward and do it, they'll, they'll actually be here to help integrate it. So bringing WestEd in to, to actually proctor live and such. Um, and then, of course, we're going to have to change our personal calendar for that grade a little bit. There's no way we could be doing thirty-minute one, one family with a teacher, thirty-minute meeting. There's even a parent teacher conference, that's another day. So we might have to change the, the school calendar for those grades and those schools that are doing it to encompass more days, which will be an expense. And that's not factored into this original funding. That'll be something we have to look at in the next year's budget. So, so it's more of a operational type of expense rather than just the basic training.
I think the question, um, or comment, I would like to know, or comment, sorry, is, you know, how is this? I know that we have the PAC or the Advisory School Council at the school. Um, and I know at one time you were doing the elections for both at the same time, IEC and the Advisory School Council. Is there joint efforts also in those two initiatives? Or are they being separate meetings, separate times? Are they collaborating with each other? Um, I guess a question that I would like to know.
Um, I believe the school, the schools that are, that have fully pulled their IEC number into their ASC, again, it's the same meaning. ASC is just another number. The IEC number is another number on that ASC in conjunction with the community members, the staff members, the two parent members. So that's, that's another spot on that ASC. And I've seen some schools, Mr. Blom, I think we're talking about when Elementary is doing it that way. They have their formal ASC number, the IEC number on their team. And they're working on the day-to-day operations in the building through their, their advisory school council.
And, and I think with, because both are entity of parental involvement, um, both are used to help our parents, um, training, you know, their input and stuff. So that's why I wanted to know that, how that would be incorporated. I would like to see probably some, some more parent training, um, you know, to, to give them that experience or knowledge of our district. You know, I know we do them in separate entities, like I, like state came in and did some of the ESS input, but I think a lot of them, we attended those meetings, um, they were still like, well, this is ESS. So I think we're really, I mean, even though we get this information out there sometimes, I mean, maybe more training, maybe at the school level on those things is something that we could see if we can improve on. Um, because they are the ones that, I mean, it's vast amount of knowledge, but I think if we do it in, in sections that we can help train our parents to be knowledgeable on these things. Even, even as simple as test-taking strategies or, you know, anything like that, that we can help our parents. With any kind of training would be helpful. Any other questions on parental involvement?
Madam President, I have.
Okay.
One is specific. Do we have PTOs in any of the schools or PTAs or anything like that? I don't seem to hear about them.
Yeah, maybe very few of the schools are using PTOs anymore since the state passed the law that, I think, the school has to have an advisory school council. Most schools have gone to the ASC concept or the PTO. Uh, PTO bodies are used every now and then for fundraising entities. And I don't even have to look that way, and just, Jumanan just cringed. Because we do have a lot of issues with the financial keeping of the PTO activity and such. As schools have started seeing issues with that, they've gone more to advisory school that type rather than a PTO separate.
And I, I think there are strengths and weaknesses to both approach ASC, maybe a little more structured in some ways. PTO might be more open, open funnel, open in terms of involvement, input, but it, I mean, depends on how it goes in specific circumstances. The other question I have, what, as we look at these things, how do we quantify our measure of parent involvement in terms of types of involvement and numbers of people? We might have a really strong ASC, let's say with a handful of people, and all the rest of the parents aren't involved. Or we might have a weak ASC, but parents are involved in other ways. I mean, how do we, how do we grasp where we're at and whether we're, you know, strengthening that or what are our guides and our measures that are, how do we, how do we count?
And that, and that's something that's very hard to measure. Um, I think one of the things we're looking at is the schools that we know have strong ASCs that are strong for involvement, doing more activities. And you're seeing more and more activities at the school rather than just one semester, the historical type thing. There are the schools that are volunteering to go to this APPT type thing because they're, they're recognizing the strength of having parental involvement, not, no, we're just more current. Our, our eight hours of parent teacher conference and let us out the door. hours of parent teacher conference and let us out the door type thing, and we'll see what happens next semester. So I think right now it's very subjective, but I would be very open to discussing how can you start objectively measuring it. And I think once we start the APPT program, start seeing parents actually making goals alongside the children, and tracking those goals, that would be a very objective measure. And of course, comparing the success of those kids to the success of schools that are ahead. Madam President?
Yes. You know, I think that measurement, the ASC, is something that really needs to get looked at and implemented. You know, I've been to a couple of the ASC meetings where we only have maybe two parents show up, or maybe just one parent, like the principal, I may direct to anywhere else that's there. You know, those, and those are the ones that I've seen that they're having, but yet they continue to have those meetings. And then I see other ASC meetings where the parents are so involved, and, you know, they want to be heard, and they're, and then they're told, okay, you're only going to have one meeting every four months, or when I approve it. You know, so there's, there's conflict in there, because the strong ASC members that are trying to get parent involvement and do parent involvement, they're stopped, they're told, you know, hold on, you, you, you go through me as a principal, you're going to have meetings when I say you can. And then that just turns off the whole parent involvement thing, and then they don't want to be involved no more. You know, I think that any parent involvement needs to be looked at, entertained, and we need to try to work with our parents, you know, with the ASC the best that we can, even though they, you know, they want to be a strong committee. You know, there's ways to go about it besides shutting them down and telling them, okay, you know, we don't want to hear it, you guys, but we have a meeting every four months now, instead of a month meeting, like some of the other ones that have weak meetings. You know, they're in there for two parents, but they're having their meetings every month. The strong committees are told, you're going to have one every four months, when I approve it. And so we need to really look into that and see how, we need to keep our parent involvement with the ASC strong. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes?
On that same note, I think sometimes it's very complicated, because we have single parents, you know, that are working, and we also have the grandparents are raising the grand, you know, the grand grandchildren, so it kind of complicates it. And it's like how do we find a better system to ensure that we do that outreach, and ensure that we, we get to those individuals, especially in rural communities, because some of these parents and grandparents don't have access or capacity, you know, to and from to participate. And so I think that these are critical areas, especially in rural communities, that we really need to typically look at and see how we could come up with a plan to re-engage and get them involved. And so I just wanted to add that to.
Madam President?
Yes?
Just to repeat history, one time, I guess, to the record, we, two things. One is that, again, with native parents, from the beginning, they were shut up for a hundred years, rhetorically speaking, a hundred years they were told, don't be involved. Kids were taken away to boarding school, against parent wishes, even physically removed, and so on. Then we turned around in recent history and started saying, get involved. And so it just doesn't happen overnight, but I think, you know, we still got that as a challenge to deal with. And the other thing, again, when we say parent, because I continually focus on the Navarre Indian situation, because that's a majority of students, and it's a historical situation that needs to be confronted, but we're talking all parents. You know, and parents, again, all backgrounds, new and old in the community, newcomers and old timers, who need to be involved in their kid's education, and communicating with the two in front of the school, and so on. So, you know, just a fundamental thing, and I, again, I go back, and I think, research continues to say, parent involvement is a factor, and there are different kinds of parent involvement, but different kinds of parent involvement help kids' education, help strengthen it. And so it's just a basic building block in an educational process, it's the parent's role. And so I think it's not just something that comes and goes, it's just always there and helps strengthen it.
I think with that, Mr. Hideman, you said there's different kinds of parental involvement. And what, I know that our district is very active, we have very active parents when it comes to athletics. And one of that is booster clubs. And just recently, you know, I just, word around town and, or different places that we go, is, you know, at this point, due to the fundraising issues, and due to restrictions and stuff like that, our parents are told, you can, there's no booster club, we don't want booster clubs, let's do, but that's a form of parental involvement. If the parents would get the training that is needed to effectively inform our parents of booster clubs and the rules and regulations, instead of just saying, no, it's too complicated, money issues, whatever, we can't do it, and just turn our backs on the parents that are trying so hard to be involved. You know, I mentioned before that, you know, as, as a student, the way that I kept my grades up was to be athletic, to, if I needed. The only way I played sports is if I stayed above my GPA average, which I never had a problem doing, but that was my rule, that my mom didn't want no Cs, if I wanted to play sports, you know, she didn't want no Cs. But we're shutting our parents down when we say stuff like that to them, that there's different forms of parental involvement. And we could get it creative at these booster club meetings, where we could incorporate some education. Say, okay, before you guys get to start your meeting, we need to tell you guys about this. Did you guys know this is happening? You know, and, and there's going to be a lot of people at those booster club meetings, but we're not taking that initiative. We're not. All we're saying is, you can't do it, it's, you know, people aren't having issues with them, with this, or fundraising, or, you know, any other kind, but, you know, we shouldn't be doing that to our parents, we should be trying to educate them, and provide that training on the do's and don'ts, on what's allowable, what's not allowable. And, and if that's going to each school, each booster club, that's why we have the staff, that's why we have the manpower to do those kind of things for our parents. We need to help our parents. So that's how I feel about booster clubs. That's another form of parental involvement that I just wanted to point out to the board, so.
I'd like to reiterate, we haven't said no fundraising, no, we've asked to go to the one booster club, so you have the proof of cut nine, because it's one entity, or to all the entities of your school, not one set of very active parents, and then over here, a set of parents who, eh, doesn't matter, we don't need, we don't need to do this, or coach's attitude, we've done it as one.
What do you mean by one? What do you mean by one? Like one booster club or one school?
Yes, ma'am.
So, but, quite simply, they have a football booster club, a basketball booster club, a cheerleading booster club, but the money's all going to one?
I bring Javanna, I think that can speak a little bit, she's a little bit more articulate in this area. I can say, I've added a Mira.
Yeah, different?
We have one booster club. Now, each sport has a representative on the booster club, and then we raise money on behalf of the school, and then we ensure that every sport is getting their one priority need to start. So it's not, basketball has a gym, golf doesn't. I don't know if you've ever been to a golf tournament and saw more than two people at the event watching it. This isn't the PGA. So what can they raise at their golf tournaments compared to, oh my goodness, look at, look at the Tohachi Shiprock Girls game the other day. You know, there wasn't that many much leisure space left, and how much they could raise in that gym, they just raised for girls' basketball. So you automatically start setting these inequities, and, and Javanna can talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, and I'll start.
You're probably talking a lot about it.
That's fine. So I'll start with kind of what I always say. All of these things are administratively complex, and they are so on purpose.
And the reason why is because we want lots of checks and balances along the way to assure that things are being done appropriately. Timeline is an equity flaw, so we are looking at boys versus girls and opportunity, to ensure that we don't have any disproportionate benefits to one gender or another. So I think personally, you and Frank are kind of talking the same half of a different coin. So you're saying, why can't each individual one raise and then put it to a pot? And he's saying, having one booster, having representatives, and it's all going into a pot. As long as there is equity, that's fine. We have been putting out lots of information regarding fundraising and booster clubs. Some of the issues that I have found is that many of our entities have been running kind of under their own practices for a period of time, in that they don't have formal bylaws, they don't have little signatures on receipts, deposits, checks, they're not doing their audits annually, and anytime that you don't have checks and balances and internal controls, you're going to have either missing money through error, or missing money through fraud, or missing money for other reasons. And it's very important to be transparent. We've had some parents come forward and say, I was with this PTO, this is what we were doing, and now the money's gone. There's nothing I can do, because I know nothing about that entity. What I do is I refer them to the local law enforcement and tell them to file a police report, that's all I can do. I can't help them, I can't assist them, they're a completely outside entity that I don't have any information on. I have been attempting to solicit the auditing information for any identified booster PTO. I reformatted all of the forms, I put together an instruction booklet, I put that out several times. To date, I have one PTO that has submitted documentation, and I just bought it. So you should be seeing them come through your formal board group as long as all of their evidence is filed. But my main point is, these clubs can't bring a community together, they can also break the community apart. And that's why there has to be internal controls. Does that mean I want to control the money? Nope. Does that mean I want to control the fundraising that they do? No. I just want to be sure that the fundraising that's done for our students in our students' name goes back to our students, and it goes back to the Met Gala. That's all I want to do, that's all I want to assure. But, you know, I always kind of say that, and it's not a process of attempting to slow people down, it's just the world that we live in today with laws and rules, there are often many kind of things that you have to check in order for things to be done fairly, but it's there for a purpose, because for so many years, it was disproportionate, whether it be ethnically, between genders, between religions, however you want to look at it, the rules and laws are there now to help us, to ensure that everyone gets a fair chance.
So how many, how many booster clubs do we have?
Booster clubs? I have had no intern in an audit to date. Me and Mira, I'm still working on the last of their paperwork, and I've got one PTO at Red Rock. I have had some other partial documentation turned in, but they didn't have all the documentation. And what I'm asking for is the same thing any audit would, a list, and it would all be presented to the board, what I have is all presented to the board, all of their statements, and assuring that they have accounting for all the funds raised and all the funds expended, demonstrating that through a bylaw process, those funds have both been raised and expended.
Another question, for Javanna and Javanna. Okay, when you stated that my Mira, me and Mira have the booster club, the one booster club, and you're saying that, you know, what I have started with me and Mira booster, or the school, is to do that, have we reached out to any other schools and gone there, that we want to, this is an idea maybe you might want to do? Have you gone to other schools to educate and have a parent meeting?
So I've been asked to a parent meeting, one of the issues that's come up is essentially games of chance or gambling. So the state got pretty strict with nonprofit entities and educational entities on games of chance and nonprofit a couple of years ago. Largely, it was due to reports on the fifty-fifty raffles, and taxes not being reported for those individuals. So there's been a lot of information that's been put out to every single one of the schools. I had one of the entities ask me to come up and speak to them regarding fifty-fifty. I brought in all of the tax forms, I explained all of the rules and regulations, they picked up those items, they threw them trash, and said, there's no way we want to deal with that. So if, if they want to talk to me, I'm more than happy to talk to them, and I push out information all the time.
Because I know that at this past training we went to, they said that, you know, like the PPT, or, you know, one school is allowed to do one, or, I can't remember, one or two within a school year?
As an entity, we can do four a year, one per quarter, four a year, as an entire entity. That means all of our schools, all of our associated student activity funds, all of that, there's no way I can equitably distribute that, so the answer for that one kind of schools is no.
It's okay if you have a district that has one, nice.
That it would create inequity for us, so I say no.
We only have one tax ID number for the district, each school doesn't have their own.
See, and, and the problem that I think we're having is, there's certain people that are coming to you, or Frank, or to us, that are asking, but the rest, everybody else doesn't know. You know, I mean, nobody's getting, especially the parents, I mean, they're the ones that are like, we want to do this, we want to fundraise, we want to get whatever, you know, the basketball, I'm destroying these out there, but to help our, our, our teams, but we're told we can't. And then they're mad, like, they're our kids, why can't we help them? You know, all they're wanting to do is help, but they're being told no, or there's...
And I think it goes back to that equity thing. So you have the girls' basketball team that is just awesome, fundraisers, want to buy everything, want to have warm-up jerseys, want to have away uniforms, home uniforms, brand-new shoes, the whole kid caboodle, and you don't have anyone else in that school that wants to do anything, or any type of fundraiser, and equity. The district would automatically have to come up with matching funds in order to keep ourselves aligned. Each year, we report that equity to the state through the New Mexico Committee Equity Act. And it's not that we don't want to, it's just that we are trying the very hardest to ensure that we're in compliance. And it's disheartening too, when you have one group that kind of seems to get everything, and then another group that kind of seems to get nothing, but how do you force someone to fundraise, or parents to participate?
I, Javanna, I think that's one of the reasons why I had asked that, you know, if we could have an amount on this donation that was given to, for them to attend a football game, you know, because somewhere down the line, we'd have to give back to one of the girl, the girls' board. And I would specify I was wanting an amount of the total donation, because we're going to have to match that somewhere.
And as I recall during that discussion, Frank was saying that we had committed to ensure that we had an equitable female opportunity.
Do you have an amount of those?
We probably don't.
We do, well, I have to look at the previous moment, but one of the girls stood up for it.
That's the one? And it's good that we're good with that.
No, this is what we approved, one can go, one can't go.
Oh, this is the, yeah, this is the Titus group.
Yes.
Christie Titus group, that's got a little awareness.
So maybe we've done it for girls in the state, we've done it for now boys in the state, and, and that.
Okay, so that, this is what I was kind of wondering, that amount?
Now, remember, it's equity and inequality, so it doesn't have to be dollar for dollar.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be dollar for dollar, because of course you're going to have inherent inequities and monetary amounts, a football team versus a golf team, two completely different monetary amounts, it's about the opportunity.
I don't know, because I know during that training, I was told that, you know, you have a parent or a parent who owns a shoe store, and they want to donate twelve pairs of shoes to just the boys' team, then you have, then we have to actually find a donor that's going to do the same amount. That's what I was told.
So here's my caution twice. My first one is, do we do business with that vendor on a regular basis? If we do, we can have issues with procurement, regarding kickbacks, regarding pay-for-play, any of those types of things. So we have to be very cognizant of who we take donations or gifts from. The other issue with that is, if you are now looking at a student athlete who has received payment or priority, you can rule there is... you can ruin their ETA, chances for going to school on scholarship, because they now become a professional athlete. There's things that we have to monitor on multiple levels for the protection of our students.
And we will reach out to the principals again, like you said, we trained all the principals and UDs. If they would like to have parent meetings, we're fully open to...
I think I would like maybe a one pager or some... I would like a one pager flyer, because this question, these issues are, do you need to come up with in our communities? And the other thing, maybe something to that effect on the website. I think would be a resource that our parents can go to also, to, you know, where we can guide them to. If we don't have that flyer right there, we can say, "Look on the website, under this, under that, whatever." And you'll find why we can't. Those are hot topics.
Okay, anything else up at that board members? Question next, we're going to move forward. Seven, Old Business Legal Services of November 14, 2016. That was our legal services, the RFP that we tabled last board meeting. On this, board members, I wanted to kind of talk to you guys. And, well, first question I wanted to ask administration Frank or Javanna. This, or I think it was Michael that was not here, but when we were talking about this, is this just the board attorney that we were discussing, or is it everything else that we have legal issues on? EEOCs, is it on those other issues, or is it just our board attorney?
There's no such thing as a board, just a board attorney. But the procurement they're selecting is the district's attorney. The districts, they represent the district. Now, in particular cases, they will only represent the board. There's multiple cases. If we terminate an employee and they ask for an appeal, this attorney will come, be the judge, and oversee it. In a sense, representing the board. And then we have to hire another attorney to represent the district on the termination process type thing. So that's why there's multiple attorneys on there. There is no such thing as just an attorney for just the board.
Well, with this RFP, I really would like to... I know we had a lot of questions and we had a lot of concerns on this, on the process of this RFP. And I think my suggestion to the board members would, again, I would like to ask that we...
Madam President, with this, you know, I think, you know, I asked a board member for the past six and a half years here plus, you know, I was always under the impression that Cuddy McCarthy was the board attorney. You know, of course, we have Rosenbauer who's also the attorney, but, you know, he's not the one that you're in contact with as a board president on, you know, if maybe a daily basis to ask for advice, to ask for any legal counseling with the board. I honestly feel that, you know, Cuddy McCarthy is our board attorney.
Which, in a sense, you are correct. I don't go to the other attorneys listed for their opinion this time, but they're contracted in October 31st. But I would like to ask the board if we could continue to cancel this RFP, legal services, and I would like to reopen it, to reissue it. Again, of course, we could do another deadline. But I would really like to entertain the board to say that I would like the board to oversee it. I would like the board to be the one to evaluate it and select...
Their attorney.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to have the shepherds that were on this to open it up along with Ms. Hanks, to tell us the point values. For instance, corporate experience. They gave us 15 points, and they wanted to know, I like to know the breakdown, how they broke it down to 15, $11.60, 11, or 11.6, 11, 13.4. How is that broken down? Was it broken down by questionnaire or what?
Mr. Menini, Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience, Mr. Griffin, Mr. Haddad. Each one of us that are on that committee, as with all of our RFP committees, signed a non-disclosure and confidentiality agreement. We are not able to discuss items that were submitted within the RFP. That is embedded within best practices of the procurement code to assure that proprietary information and information submitted by vendors is not disclosed or would otherwise disadvantage them if they were to RFP against other vendors again. So that's not information I can give you.
Okay, question. This committee, got together and as a group narrowed it down to 11.6 as a group?
Each of us were chosen by the procurement office. We were brought in by the procurement office. Each of us signed our non-disclosure agreements. Once those non-disclosure agreements were signed, we were handed the request for proposals that were submitted by the vendors. We were not given the sealed monetary amounts that were proposed by each vendor as is practiced. Each of us read through the documents that were given to us, and then we were brought down into committee together.
So as a group, you came up with these presidencies?
It is upon the average.
As a group?
You go.
Madam President, thank you very much. Ms. Hanks, thank you.
You didn't vote it, and that's an average.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, that it's an average, that each one of us read each proposal. Yeah.
Madam President, I think that to actually reject the RFP and have the board actually do, I mean, consider their own attorney as a board, as a board attorney. You know, because we have past performance here, we have experience with public education, experience with law, all these things that were given a point rating. You know, as far as past performance and other values added to services, I think that we as a board who actually work with our attorney and, you know, go to these law conferences and have our attorneys do most of the sessions with their law experience, you know, I can't find how you guys can give these ratings when we as a board work with them, work with Cuddy McCarthy just as much and would be able to give our input as far as past performance.
When you go into an RFP, none of that knowledge can be considered. You must only consider what they've given you in writing as written in the proposal. Any of that, if you are biased, if you already prior to the award know who you want to give the award to, you should automatically exclude yourself from that committee. It's embedded within procurement law.
It's not about who we want to give it to, even if it's about knowing what their performance is.
You can't. That's not what it's based upon.
So why does it say past performance?
And that's based upon what they wrote in their proposal.
What they write in the proposal, that's what you've scored. Right now, if we put just the board on, your experiences with Cuddy McCarthy, so...
No, we've also had Rosenbauer, because we've worked with him.
But now these other two...
We don't, we don't, yeah, we don't know them because what have they done for us? What have you given us as board that says, "Okay, these guys are gayos." Walsh and Gayos, what, you know, they're doing this for us, they're overseeing this for us. We haven't received a report like that. I mean, what have they done to help us in this area for us to really know who they are? And then also the other firm, you know?
And we're speaking to the integrity of the procurement process. It's not about what someone has given you or personally given you benefit for. That's actually what the procurement process seeks to exclude, to offer fair competition.
Madam President and board members, it's just like purchasing concrete. They propose a proposal for concrete, where there's so much aggregate, so much sand, and so much delivery cost. That is the only thing that they see of all those three or four bidders, and they bid those as they are, correct?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have two questions. Now, one is, I have been around Congress, but I was when we approved this last annual contract for Cuddy's law firm. The Roseboro law firm is also doing services. Is that a carryover from earlier involved in the continuing case, and that's why we have both?
So Walsh and Gayos is also available to us, but essentially in 2013 with the last formal RFP that was put out, it was allowed to be renewed annually for three years. So that final contract ended in October 31st of 2016. We had to go out back at the RFP because that three-year allocation for us to renew had ended. Just like all other RFPs, it was advertised publicly for anyone who wanted to to actually provide a proposal. And then based upon the information within the RFP, they provided us written documentation.
The second question is, in terms of dollar amount of limit, is an RFP required for this particular contract? I don't know, is it over the...
$60,000 is the threshold, and I wouldn't even go my guess. I would say we're probably about $300,000 right now with Cuddy McCarthy. We are a little bit under with Roseboro, and we are under with Walsh and Gayos.
For one year?
For one year, yeah. I mean, that's just for the July to now. But, you know, just as a reminder, the procurement code, which is New Mexico statutes annotated, which is what we have adopted as our procurement process, essentially seeks to ensure fair and open competitive bidding among all vendors who want to apply. And then whoever that committee is can only base their decision on the written documentation that's given. It cannot be based upon personal past performance and should never be based upon personal benefit, kickbacks, or relationships.
Madam President?
Yes.
Further commentary. When we purchase in the district something like vehicles, that there'd be no reason for the board to think they should have any involvement. That to me, in terms of whatever, the board is better than the shivvy, or the board bid is better than the shivvy, or vice versa. When it comes to a service, that is a service for the board, consulting service in a sense, I understand that the board would naturally want to somehow pick the person who's going to be there, and if it's done through an RFP, through a description, in the RFP of the things sought after as far as qualifications, like this list, that I think is still in order. It isn't a matter of picking your friends, you know, or picking somebody you know better than the other one. To have some objectivity is why you have these criteria. But I too think that understandable and proper for the board to select the attorney that's going to serve them through that RFP process than an RFP in terms of the dollar requirement. And I'll, at this point, venture a motion, make a motion. I will move that we might need some help there in terms of what we need to do.
So prior to your motion, Mr. Mitchell, may I make just two comments?
Go ahead.
The first one being, it's kind of been publicly stated what the preference of the board is. It's kind of been publicly stated what the preference of the board is. So I think that we are going to find ourselves a little bit in issue possibly. It's been recorded and publicly stated this is who we want for our board attorney.
Who said that?
So, Mr. Mitchell.
All I've said is we would want to be a part of who we did. I've never said this is whom I want.
The other issue is, is that per board policy, the board must vote on RFPs and bids. So you would be approving your own decision?
Madam President?
Yes.
Javanna, so right now we don't have an attorney, is that correct, as of October 31st?
As long as we, any ongoing litigation, so litigation that's already in progress will continue. That was part of the previous RFP. So if there's a court case already ongoing, filed happening right now, such as Mr. Roseboro in the capital outlet lawsuit, that's allowable. It was stipulated in our previous RFP. If we are going to exceed $60,000, we can utilize. So we have two law firms, I believe, that are below $60,000. I believe Mr. Roseboro hasn't hit that threshold yet, and neither has Walsh and Gayos.
And, Madam President? Well, I think my recommendation, I know that there's going to be a motion, is why can't we just admit? Because I don't want to get into, I don't want to get into us saying we're doing a favor to them, but we've been utilizing Cuddy and McCarthy. And I think that if we could continue to utilize them maybe for a month, and then from there go ahead and do another bid.
He's hit the monetary threshold for above $60,000 with him, so we cannot do any new cases or new, open any new items with him.
That's when we're, that's what my understanding of that is, is when we're on contract with him, then, but when we get on, that's a non-contract fee though.
No, I'm sorry, Madam President, that's not accurate.
So what is, so once our threshold is at $60,000, that's from what date?
July 1st of this year.
Exceeded it with Cuddy McCarthy, so we could not use them for any new advice. Actually, since October 31st, we already had 11. Mr. Mitchell, did you identify the board orally? And I put it out in writing, remember? Any other advice needs to go through one that we have, open ceiling?
I think also because they're included in this RFP, we may even need to go to another third party if there's going to be questions on the RFP. If it's not questions on the RFP, we could probably go to the two that haven't hit the $60,000. If there's another question that we needed legal counsel on.
When I was researching this, because there's things that have come up, and there's places where I've seen that talk about small purchase exemption to the recruitment, procurement code with the small purchase order limited to $60,000, where we can use a contract from the date of November 1st. Can't we do that?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. So we report each year to the state auditor. Every vendor that we spend more than $60,000 with from July 1st to June 30th. That is the fiscal year for school districts. And that's where the line is actually crossed, is for these types of services is $60,000. It is a different monetary amount. It is a different monetary amount per chance.
Madam President? May we continue?
With your motion.
Well, prior to your motion, I have not stated the preference for any of these firms. I did indicate in previous meeting that I'm familiar with one of the firms, local firms, and have great respect for them. The other comment is that the board under its own policies can set aside individual policies when need be. I'm not sure that, that needed at this point. But I'm going to move, we can talk further, modify, amend, accept, reject. But I will move that, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to make a motion to reject because the, the request is, is to approve the recommended bid. If we don't approve it, that's simply not approved, in my opinion. So I'm just saying, I will move that we issue, that, that a new RFP be issued. And that the proposals be received by and evaluated by the board as the receiving committee. And I don't see that as different. I can stand to be corrected, but I think the board acts on other matters at times as things directly under their purview. And so, at least for purposes of discussion, possible approval. I'll repeat that. My motion is that a new RFP be issued and that the proposals in response to that be received by and evaluated by the board.
How will the board be doing that? Under confidentiality agreement, let me as a forum?
I'm sorry.
How will the board be meeting as a quorum under confidentiality of non-disclosure? If it had to be an in-house meeting, is the issue at what you're proposing for the full board. You cannot do any executive session or these are non-mature decisions.
So why couldn't the other committee do it? Not?
We are not a board. We're not elected officials, Mr. Mitchell.
We can score them separately by two board members each.
I, I'm just, before we go down this road, I want to be sure that we're just kind of thinking through all of the new professions.
Helping us to be proper.
We can do two at a time.
I, okay, Madam President, with the board's permission, I will withdraw my motion. I will move rather that the board establish a committee of two members to receive and process and provide a recommendation in response to a new RFP to be issued within the next, do we put a timeline on that first?
What will be our cause for cancel to the vendors who have already supplied through the other RFP? What will be our, I know, but what will be our cause for cancel? Because we really need to cancel the RFP for leaving these vendors and provide them pause.
What have some of the reasons been in the past?
Typically, services are no longer necessary. Typically, when we see an RFP canceled or a vendor who was offering to provide services has closed.
I think in this case, it's a lack of confidence in the definitions and rating process and system. Given the questions embraced about how these items are to be interpreted.
So the board is stating that the employees who participated in this were not able to understand the need?
Maybe, maybe the screening committee doesn't understand. I mean, I, I think that's, I, I don't think the integrity of the individual listing, that's not the issue.
Mr. Mitchell, I think we, I think, I think if a month would be good for this. Maybe Jan, in January, to have, if you want a deadline, I think that would be, I think a month is good.
And what I'm hearing is it's going to be evaluated by a committee of two? Two on the committee? So have a committee with two board members plus?
Two, two, two.
Plus Marco.
Marco would be part of the committee, he's the chief procurement officer, he would refuse himself.
What's going on in this concrete day-to-day down there term? There seems to be a conflict between the technical interpretation of at least one of these items and common sense. When we go to state board meetings, and again, I'm not stating a preference here, but I'm stating a question about the identifiers, the qualifiers, whatever you want to call these. When visibly several firms in the state are consistently the ones who are specialists in school law and constantly training school boards and school administrators in conferences, then, then, I understand you're saying, well, the only thing was evaluated was what they submitted.
And that's the only thing that can be evaluated by the law?
And maybe they were deficient in what they submitted. What I want to get is the most qualified firm. And in other parts of our experience in common sense, we say, hey, here's some of the firms that are the state specialists in school law. So I, I think we want to have that process repeated to have confidence in it and, and have the board involved in its selection of its attorney. I'm not speaking as an attorney or accountant, I'm speaking out of just common sense.
But a little bit of what you're saying is the only attorney you prefer is cutting McCarthy.
I didn't say who I prefer. I said there are several law firms.
Jovanna, this is saying, it's the third time you putting words in our board member's mouth. Don't, don't assume and don't make, don't put words in our mouth because we're not saying that. You did that three times now.
But I'm asking a clarifying question.
No, we're not.
This is an important part of why we're canceling the RFP.
Mr. Mitchell said he wasn't. Now Lynn's saying he's not, he wasn't. You're making us say that we're saying that, we're not saying that. Now you're saying our, your staff is incompetent. We didn't say that. Why can't we question something? Because you guys, this is something that we're very strongly feel about, that we have an input. We're not saying that, Jovanna. Don't put words in the board member's mouths, that's not right.
But I guess my question is, is that the cause has been, I don't like the choice. What do you say, David?
It has been the previous.
I think, I'm not convinced that we got full information from the proposal makers, from the firms.
Yes.
I want to make sure we got full information for the evaluation of the proposal.
And, and you know, Jovanna and, and we're president, I think that in reality, it's really determined by the board. And I think, I don't think that we should be challenged as a board and questioned as a board. I think it's a director board. I think that what we're trying to do is to ensure that we as school board members get the right individual to represent us. And so in doing so, you know, I just think that we need to, if we want to have it as an open meeting, let's have it as an open meeting. Let's interview them as a school, as a school board. So that way, we're all in the same track versus transparency. And so, you know, that is really my recommendation. I don't think that we have prolonged this and get into she said, he said. And I'm not going to have anybody put words into my mouth. I just think that it was a concern from several of us board members because of this item that we received, you know, how it was breaking down. And I just feel that, you know, we should determine that. And that is really who we, whoever we want to represent us. And so I, I think that that's the, you know, the recommendation that I want to make. And I think that we should take it in action and go with that action and we'll just cut the chase. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, please?
Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Of those three law firms, they've all three have visited conferences to the New Mexico School Board Association. I've been to every single one of those persons and personnel representing those firms at our conferences. So those are the schools that have presence over school law. So that, those three, I don't know any other. No, Mr. Roseborough is our local representative of the, of the lawsuit. But those three personnel or law firms are school qualified. They know what they're doing, they're interested in schools. Not saying that they're all equal, as you see on the graph there, but they're all people have presented in the school, New Mexico school conferences. And I've been to them. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor, board members, go ahead and ask for the, 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 the.
Madam President? Before you do that, I think we have to have, okay, I'm, I'm, my last motion, latest motion was in terms of that was in a committee, subcommittee, board of two members. I think the last comment was to go ahead with the full board in an open process. And so I think there's a choice there. I guess simply, is that the, again, I withdraw my motion as a sense of preferring the other or we can vote it forward or vote it down and then.
Just be patient, Jovanna, we'll get it. This is the first time we're done with this. I know you're confused, we're, we're trying to get it correct for you.
Sure.
I believe that what Mr. Mitchell was saying is that it has to be in confidentiality. I think that was mentioned by Mr. Hanks. So I don't think we can do it in an open meeting. But since these, they, they did the point system and they regulated it, I don't think why we can't, like the same way we do our superintendent evaluation. Remember how we scored it each individually? If we can have two groups to do that and then another two groups to do it, I, I, I think that. And then one, I don't know.
You mean two subcommittees?
Uh huh.
I think it's about that. It's truly around the one.
Just have one committee. One committee.
Actually, just take, I would suggest taking the existing RFPs and having two board members score it and adjourn. No? Does anyone just shut that down?
No.
I think it needs to be reduced.
So let's, let's.
Yeah, we voted not to accept RFP and we, we bid it.
Yeah.
We'll establish the subcommittee of two. Well, I'll add the word rejection just because it makes it clearer. We reject the, the, the recommendation that's received and.
Reissue?
To have a new RFP issued. And that those proposals in response be received by and evaluated by the subcommittee of the board, assisting two members of the board to make the recommendation with the full board. Without a problem. We're here.
Marco?
Mr. Mitchell?
No!
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Do we need somebody to work with Marco when rejection might reach for to go up to him? Been replied.
Um, the only question I have right now, we do have, I have a lot of questions that I would like to get some legal opinions on. And they do pertain to the board, more issues that are coming up with different things, like the superintendent's evaluation and different things like that, some lawsuits. And I do need legal counsel at this, at this time. Sorry, I'm, don't have an interest in that field. And I'm not about to continue to do the research that I did on this one little piece of the RFP. But I would, I don't know how we can, if, if you could, administration could help us on this. There is a part that said that, like, like I read, that we could have a contract. The only person, our only firm that, that is able, that is assisting us right now that are starting all the way back to the ground and don't know the history of what this board has done or doing. And how do we, how do we continue that? And I know that there's a section I read that we could have a contract up to $60,000 with a non-contract services. So is that something that we can entertain today? Because I do need that service of the people that do have our history.
Madam President, that $60,000 threshold applies to the fiscal year. So if they've met $60,000 from July until present, without an RFP, we cannot issue an additional purchase order.
Okay, let me read this to you. Because I'm understanding it differently than, than that. Under, it says, it can be accomplished, no problem. There in New Mexico Procurement Law, at section 3.1, the small purchase exemption of the New Mexico Procurement Law, of New Mexico statute, the statute provides that central purchasing offices may procure professional services having a value not exceeding $60,000, excluding acceptable state and local grocery packs in accordance with professional services procurement rules by the Department of Finance and Administration. The general services department for the general purchasing office with the authority to issue rule. I, I, and this is for a non-contract. I understand where you're going with the, when we're contracted with them. But this is for after we met that contract.
So kind of long story short, as you know, we issue out purchase orders, which are actually purchase contracts in order to do business with vendors. Each one of those purchase orders obligates the vendor in the district to specific duties, i.e. they will perform the services, we will make payment for services performed. Our year starts over every year at July 1st. And so this is just to kind of tap into another issue. We have a firm that was wanting to offer educational professional services with the district. And three different schools were looking at them. Each one of the schools had a contract or was wanting to do a contract that was less than $60,000. But combined, they would have been above $60,000, so we went out to RFP. And that's what we do in any circumstance where we're going to go above $60,000 with any one vendor. Now, there, there can be exceptions to that. If there is a state contract or another contract that we can pay back off of. But these types of services are not, for example, CES. CES sends out RFPs, we're allowed to pay back off of those RFPs.
So if we did a non-contract, if you're saying, did load this $40,000? If we did a non-contract, would we say $40,000? and if we did a non-contract, would we say $40,000?
As long as that vendor, we have not spent more than $60,000 with that vendor since July 1st.
Now I can't find it. Hold on. Well, that's going to be another thing that we're going to have to discuss, I think, um, is what we're going to do. So who, who are you suggesting that is under $60,000?
So I would not suggest. That's kind of improper for me to do so. I can tell you which legal firms with the district are below $60,000 currently. I would never recommend one vendor over another just to avoid interpropriety.
I guess she's asking, who would turn very much firm that we could look at to see which one might be able to do that.
Um, essentially, any law firm in the state of New Mexico, um, except for Teddy McCarthy, who we reached the threshold with.
I think with reasonable, Richard.
Okay, so Bob Roseborough would also be off that list. What's great, okay, oh.
So just.
No, the contract.
Yeah.
Contract and non-contract. So there is no such thing as non-contract? Everything we do is through a purchase contract, or purchase order, as it's usually called.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a statement, uh, if this is helpful, Ms. Hanks, in terms of leading a justification. I would think of it as to assure that the proposals received provide the fullest available information about and from the firms submitting proposals. I want to be sure that we get the fullest possible information, um, that's useful. And secondly, I would like to make a motion, um, following up the other one. I move that the president, the vice president of the board constitute the two members of the collection.
You can't add an action item.
I'm sorry?
Can't add an action item.
It's on the same item, isn't it? Part of the same item, maybe.
Legal services.
What's the deal about the? What's the deal about the legal?
Two volunteers be on the committee, but you can't add an action item to the motion.
He said we can volunteer.
You guys can volunteer.
We can volunteer. We can volunteer.
I mean, I think that's been steering, and I'm quite generally, but.
Well, I mean, we do that, we do that. You know, we talked about the rest of the lawman earlier, and we moved into booster clubs to this, to that, and.
I mean, all of them were involved.
Well, that's what he's saying.
And we weren't taking an action. He is asking to take an action, which separates the two.
Yes, I'll go ahead for the record. I will volunteer, um, to be on the committee for legal services.
Um, I will not volunteer because of hearsay. I think I'll just kind of stay out of it, um, since that would be put on the spot, saying hearsay, I would send this and send that. I think that, um, in order to, um, keep, keep me off of that, I, I'll, I won't volunteer.
Down the line?
Oh, coming down the lines.
Okay, I'm voluntary.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's like in your. They volunteer. They volunteer you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward to.
Um, okay. Oh, pardon me, let me just give you the background of this. I mentioned it earlier. At the latest NMSPA conference, who, I attended the, uh, session presented about the school climate survey that was done at Los Alamos Schools, and I'm familiar with school climate surveys in my experience. I've dealt with one for a while. But the Los Alamos School District, uh, survey was presented in that session by Dr. Hugh Prather. I'm not sure if I say his name right, right there. Uh, and this Los Alamos Superintendent and the Los Alamos Board President presented that session mutually. And I, as I heard it, I thought, uh, you know, this could be very helpful to us as a district, and not just as a board, but as a district, if we wanted to pursue. And I, I put this in as an action item. It was probably really a discussion item. Uh, the action I thought was not to doubt the specific survey or anything, but simply to take action if we want to pursue, uh, exploring it further, or initiating some, uh, action by the administration to look into this, or to set something up. Here's the point. We hear lots of things, or a few things proportionally, I mean, there are hundreds and hundreds of, hundreds of students, hundreds of boys, hundreds of parents, thousands literally. And when we hear something from one party or another, we don't always know to what extent that's representative of the rest of that group. Even our public comments, I appreciate, and we need them, we value having the public comments. But when we get a comment from, uh, a parent from a given community, we don't know if that's the viewpoint of everybody in that community, or in other communities. I mean, that's just one kind of example. Same way when, when staff may make comments to us if we meet them in a store. I mean, this happens, you know, we're a board member, and it's, hey, all right. Um, we dealt with a lot of allegations and a lot of comments and a lot of viewpoints a year ago. A lot of concerns by people. And the point of a climate survey is not to see, you know, whether it's 60 degrees or 80 degrees in the school building. It's to see what people's experience is, and what their perceptions are, and how the operation is going. And a school climate survey, I don't know if that climate is the best word. It comes partly from the idea that what aspect of climate is, how are people feeling? Right? There's an objective measure of certain kinds of operations. But there's also what, how are people feeling working in that environment of a given school or a school district? Whether it's administrative, central office, or whether it's in a given school, um, out in the district. And so a survey is basically a questionnaire that asks a lot of kinds of questions of teachers, of staff, of parents, to see how they are seeing things. What kinds of experience are they having in their working relationships and their working experience for a district or for their school? And it can provide, the idea is to provide feedback, provide insight in terms of their perceptions. And one of the things that, um, is involved in that is their own involvement, their own input, and the communication process, and how they're experiencing that, how they're seeing it. One of the points that Dr. Prather mentioned about the Los Alamos thing, which I think fits galloped, is that when the idea came up, there was a lot of distrust about the nature of doing a climate survey and how, what use it would be put to. And the value of having him facilitated as an outside consultant was to assure people that it was a, a neutral party conducting the survey, gathering the results. The result, the survey was done anonymously, and it was set up by the consulting firm in a way that people were confident and secure that, um, that their answers were confidential in the sense of being anonymous. The only exception to that possibly could be where they were invited to make comments in addition to answering the survey questions, if, if, you know, not multiple choice, that fashion, whatever. I suppose a person, I'm, I'm supposing, as he didn't say that, a person could make a comment that was so specific, it would reveal who made the comment. That, that would be possible. Otherwise, there was no way to track individuals. But then the responses were gathered and collated by school as well as by district. So you got a picture of feedback for that respective principal. Say, here's what parents at, for this school are thinking, here's what teachers over at this school are thinking, so the principals could work with that, and well, the central administration. I just think it could be very useful. I'm presenting it not for action in terms of saying, we're adopting this, or we're going to hire Dr. Prather's firm, or whatever, but to see whether the board wants to go ahead with it. I guess the action to me would simply be whether that interests you, whether you would want more information, even specific information. I, I could, um, the, the Los Alamos survey should be posted now. Their results should be posted through the NMSPA website. I have looked, I have looked to see if it's there, but it isn't available to everybody. So I just, I don't know if you want to pursue it, want some more specific, concrete information about the kinds of questions that are common to that, that kind of climate survey.
So when did they do this, and, um, I mean, how, how did they do it to keep the confidentiality?
It was computer, computer done, where they set up. I don't know the mechanics of the system exactly.
We've done it the last several years with Survey Monkey.
Right, Survey Monkey, what they use.
We're actually working on now for the schools, departments, et cetera. And I would suggest the board would ask some questions to incorporate in the work.
Right, a person can add to the, to their stock questions, to make whatever. The other thing, um, is that Los Alamos is doing it as a three-year cycle. As they did it the first year, they did it the second year to look for trends, better or worse. And this is, now they're going into their third year, which I, that's the extent, that's the cycle of contract with Dr. Prather's consulting firm. Uh, what they'll do beyond that, I don't know. But they have the first two years done, and they're now looking at completing the third.
I like the, I like the idea of, um, how, how they did, how they use an outside source to conduct this survey. I think that, um, people would probably feel more comfortable.
Madam President, keep going. We can get some more information on that. We can go into further more, you know, input on that. And get the district prepared, and just make sure that, so, that's a good start. Appreciate it.
Madam President, I also think that this is a good idea. However, I like to, uh, put this as a form motion to postpone for this to get more information.
Thank you. Um, your call, please.
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Hanks?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Mahoney?
Yes.
Sandra, I think you brought this one to the board. I put it in the, um, the one that Ms. Jones provided first. I, I need a copy of that, and I put it in that folder for you guys. Is it that? It's on there? Yeah, yeah, that's the one. Is it the one with the yellow card? No. I, yeah, this one, the staple in the middle. It's the same one, then?
Yeah. It's the Board of Education Resolution 1617.
Yeah, it's, it's all secrets.
Ms. Hanks?
Um, Madam President, yeah, the board members, I just wanted to give a copy of this resolution. The Board of Education Resolution. I wanted your input, you know, um, if we should make any changes. And we can, we can also, um, review this and then come back, um, our next board meeting. Maybe we should postpone, like, January 3rd, because I just wrote this about this today. We would have reviewed it, but, um, because if we, if we can come back and, or the third, get your input on this, and then we can, um, work on this, work on this until January 3rd, and then come back and take the motion.
Okay, I just want to say on this, um, you know, one thing about, um, attending the New Mexico School Board Association, and you make connections with different school districts. And I'm very glad that, you know, we make that connection, because on issues like this, I, I, I asked different school districts to see how their, um, OMA's are. And I kind, I, I got this, I think we sent this to Joan about four days ago? Um, when she sent it to us, and I, I kind of put my little, um, input in already, um, if you guys want to look at that. That's, that's just from me, after what I've seen from other, um, other boards. The one with the red? Yeah, um, I gave one to Tabana also, I mean, to Frank to give, or Tabana to give to Frank. I can give this copy to, um, Joan too. But of course, you know, I, I mean, this is something that I was kind of tweeting around with from, like I said, from the other school districts, I got like maybe four or five.
Madam Chair, um, Mr. Minini doesn't have the first two, the top two pages of the.
Okay, here's mine. Joan made extra copy. That's, that's an extra one right here. It's front and back.
Thank you.
So, but yeah, I think that having the rest of the board having input on it would be essential. But I'm just, I just kind of, um, read, of course, my research that I, I did and asked other district assistants, so.
Are you changing on the third page?
Yeah, on the back.
But the red is the divisions. And the blue is the additions.
Oh, yeah.
Remember, you're saying you want to table this, that square?
Well, let me, let me just review what you have on here. Yeah, yeah, let's, let's do that.
Yeah.
Okay. So you have a motion to, to both, those homeless, and we'll talk about it in January.
Okay.
And action of that, have that time.
Motion made by Senator Jeff to table. Motion made by Senator Jeff to table, um, AI until December 3rd's meeting, January, January. Thank you. I want to go back, January 2017. Roll call?
Mr. Meney?
Yes.
Mr. Heman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Yes, I know you.
Yes. Number nine. Executive Session.
Yes, and I'll move that, we, uh, excuse yourself, I'm going to executive session this time.
Going into executive session at five o'clock, roll call?
Mr. Meney?
Yes.
Mr. Heman?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Manolio?
Yes.